We do have a holiday event that we've been working on, Recreation Department, tree writing event on Saturday, December 6th. I have the flyer here. We've been working on that along with the Board of Education. Nothing else to report this time.
I have a few things. I've been getting a lot of calls on senior housing or 55 and over, whatever we call it. And I think it's time that we get a workshop, maybe at the Belville High School, to see how many units are going up, who's eligible. The people should be told about all the details and to inform them what's going on. So I think it would be a good idea if a workshop is, you know, had by the town. Kevin?
Okay.
Does everybody agree to that?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Because I'll tell you the truth, I'm not too up on it either, but I'm getting a lot of calls. Also-
Kevin, let's just say when the development isn't available.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. The other thing is, as I was coming to this meeting tonight, a couple of my neighbors up the block on that infamous Caribbean essence bar, they're still having problems. They're still urinating outside. The girl said she sent a letter here and she did put her on record with the Belville Police Department. Things like this cannot go along with children on the street. This happened on Sunday evening. When they come out of the bar, they urinate in the driveways of the residence. Something needs to be done. Mr. Mayor, you said at the last meeting, maybe we should not renew their license. Well, maybe we should look into something because this cannot go on. I don't know what else to do.
I just hope these people are recorded every time-
They did. They did. And her name, I have her name-
No, so what is it, police report or-
A police report. On Sunday, it was November 23rd, and her husband came out and, you know-
If we get enough, we could probably deny it for reasons and let them fight for their position.
Okay.
Mayor, since the last council meeting, sorry to interrupt the council. We had the police security mobile unit, the camera system. I passed it today. That camera system is currently in place. If it was in place over the weekend, I can ask the chief to run the videotape and if they can identify individuals or whatever, and make every attempt I can.
It's really funny. They have the bar closed a few days too, when they saw that thing.
Well, it is going to be a while, so.
And, you know, I felt a little bad when I was outside, when the hearing was done, and we voted only to give one abatement over there, and, you know, the audience clapped. I just hope that this does not happen to anyone else near their homes, people urinating in their driveways. So the ones that clapped, I really don't think that was proper. And the last thing is, Kevin, I've been asking since September for the report on just the party. I know when I was not running it anymore, the last time, there was something like fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars in it. I'd just like to know the receipts that came, the disbursements, and what the balance is. Thank you. I've asked that quite a few times. That's it.
Well, isn't there a preliminary report, but she was waiting for a couple of checks?
We were still waiting on one last.
Well, can we just take that out and just give me what you have?
Let's get the report on that.
Yeah.
Okay. No problem.
I have nothing else, Mr. Mayor.
I just have a few things. First of all, Kevin, I just wanted to say that the Halloween event was really very well done and a good response. We had a lot of kids there. And again, I like to see these things that we do. We do a Christmas one. We talked about something again in the spring, do something. This is very important for the recreation for the kids. So again, I'm very pleased with that. There's a little problem on Portland Street, and many of the neighbors have contacted me. They were actually going to get a petition. They're going to come down tonight. I tell them, "Don't get a petition. Let's deal with this conservatively when we go to the next step." Problem there is speeding. Basically, what I'm hearing is it's around the commuting hour, anywhere from about 4:30 to 6:30. Apparently, they're coming down very, very fast, and this has been going on for quite a while now. It really does need to be addressed. You know, somebody today said to me, "Why don't we get a cop car there?" I said, "Well, that's fine. Just don't let the cop car leave. You're going to have speeding again," you know? So I know we did have the car there with the electrical tammer, but again, that's obviously not working. We need to come up with a situation, dealing with the problem on Portland Street. I know that, I mean, personally, I don't want this on my street, but I know a lot of them are in favor of speed bumps. That's something that we need to talk about, we need to address because there is a problem there. Also, there's a house on Portland, 417, that's on the corner of Portland and Terry. There was a sign there, and it said, "No parking here to corner." The sign was destroyed during, I believe it was Hurricane Sandy. The DPW, they went last week, and there was like a stake sticking up. They did take that down, and the owner of the house thanked you for that, by the way. But he was wondering if he can get another sign up there. It's been a sign forever. It was just because of the storm, the sign came down. I don't know if we go to Officer Corvo for this, but he can replace that with, you know, with the sign that was taken down because of the storm. So we're going to address that problem on Portland Street. As far as the senior housing, I've also received calls, people who don't know how to go about this, are eligible. So I think having some type of a meeting with people would be important regarding the senior housing. And also, there is no one in this room that probably hates snow more than I do.
I love it.
And we also have a snowstorm here, where, as you all know, you've been watching the news. So again, I know our DPW will do a good job. You always have in the past. We have a monthly, and I'm just sorry that you guys are probably going to have to work. I'm just giving warning, you know? But I know you'll be there for us. Thank you. Two quick things, Kevin. The parking lot is going to be finished tomorrow. When will they have the opportunity to use it?
They had every hope to have it completed tomorrow. They were running to see bedrock along the connection. In the past, there was no drains. I was up there this afternoon, and with any luck, we'll open the next Monday, next Tuesday. The building should be reopened for the typical Tuesday party.
I know during the water main break, that Pickett team sent one of its pumpers down.
Yes.
I'd like to, from the council's perspective, to recognize them and thank them for what they did.
Absolutely.
And I don't believe in my discussion with them, that they should be really first.
Thanks, Kevin. Communications?
Let me see. The county investors, Department of Economic Development Training and Employment Division of County Community Development awarded the township $140,000 to dollars to fund a reconstruction of Madison Street.
Orders for deduction?
Orders number one for deduction, and orders to the playground located at 89 and 91 N H Street, Mary Beach, Senator.
Order for deduction.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Orders for public hearing?
Orders number one for public hearing. Bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the water utility, ended by the township of Belville, the county investors in Jersey, appropriating $201,255. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $201,255, bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof.
Make a motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
I read the ordinance on the board there, but it doesn't specifically. What are we actually doing with this $200,000?
These are various improvements to water mains throughout the township.
I read that, various, but specifically what? Are we going to clean and reline, or is it just to take care of the breaks that are occurring daily?
This is to take care of breaks that are occurring daily. I have met with Mr. Hartz, the engineer, and have asked him to prepare a plan for cleaning and relining. We do have some antiquated areas in town that have not been relined, so he was working on a plan. Hopefully, we can get that going for spring vacation.
So this is just for current breaks?
This is for breaks.
This money is not for the clean and reline?
This is not for cleaning and reline, I'm sorry.
Is this money for the cost of summer breaks, we already fixed?
Yes, it is, Mr. Mayor.
Like, you know, I don't know if any of you probably have Belville Avenue. You know, the last six months, there was five weeks on Belville Avenue alone. The last one on the corner of Mike Street, Belville Avenue, Mount Prospect, if you're paying for that, I don't know if we're creating a ski slope now, DPW. We've got that knot in the dirt for years. Now, I've been involved years. We dug a hole, we fixed it, and we put the dirt back in. Now, we're bringing all the dirt. What happens, like, what they did there, like, they're doing all these holes, they got a dump truck of gravel, which we're buying brand-new gravel, and they finish? Dump truck goes up, all the gravel goes in a hole. Go look at it. It's already collapsing. You've got a hole about two feet deep, ready to gravel and sink it. Why don't you send them, because we have them in town now. We have public service in town. Look how they fill the holes. They put a foot of dirt in, the guy's down in there with a compactor, compact it. Another foot of dirt, they compact it again. Their holes don't sink. We keep spending tons of money on gravel, fill them incompetently, and then we got all this dirt, and we got to pay to get rid of down there. What after all, you've been around a long time, Kevin, you're in all your time. We never had this dirt. We filled the hole back with the dirt. I'm a contractor. I do little jobs and all. I do the same dirt back there again. Why are we spending all this-
Well, you won't.
This is on the ordinance, because this is the result of the incompetence. Two hundred grand to fix existing leaks when we don't want to clean and reline. And I just got a question to ask. Can any of you councilmen answer me a question? This is 20 years I've been asking. Why don't you want to clean and reline the water mains, which is a health hazard?
We don't. We're going to get a price from them.
Absolutely. What are you going to do? And there is a plan initiated by Joe Brandy in 1984. We did the oldest part of the valley. I keep telling you, we entered somewhere in Washington area around Rutgers or Academy. Just continue it.
I understand, but could you just stick to the ordinance?
Well, this is the ordinance, right, because this kind of stuff is the result of the incompetent management of our water system. So this time is a quarter million dollars. What's the next time? And we add up all the other stuff. But I estimate it, and so this is accepted. Could you read the thing? It's for various improvements or what? They're not improvements. It's for various repairs that were already done, and we didn't have the money. So now, besides not being able to pay in this year's budget, we're the taxpayers, got it going hot for a quarter million dollars.
And if, and if, you finished?
Huh?
You finished?
Well, if you can answer, give me a legitimate answer. Why are we going to continue to do this crazy stuff?
Because we're doing the best we can. And I've been reading it in the papers and here and on television, that the infrastructure is so bad throughout this country that the federal government and the state governments do not have the money to pay for it all, and they don't know where they're going to get the money.
When did you read this?
Because it's been an old week. I don't know.
Well, Benny Frant Antoni told you this for the last 20 years. They've put a whole lake system in there.
You shouldn't have told the federal government.
I didn't tell you it's bad. I've been telling you to fix it.
Maybe you shouldn't have told the federal government.
I don't mean the federal government. They're not responsible for it.
We were down here.
I just testified in Trenton later.
Thank you.
Not to give you guys any more money, because you're wasting it.
Yeah, I know. Thank you.
Make a motion, close public hearing.
Second.
Quick move.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders, ordinance number one for second and final reading. Bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the water utility, ended by the township of Belville, the county investors in Jersey, appropriating $201,255. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $201,255, bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof.
Make a motion, move for final adoption.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders approved. Orders number two for public hearing. Bond ordinance providing for reconstruction of various streets, ended by the township of Belville, the county investors in Jersey, appropriating $2,811,000. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $2,758,263, bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof.
Make a motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
What streets are covered up here?
Reconstruction of- Whole streets from Valley to Main, Geralman Street from Franklin to Hoover, including all work of materials necessary, therefore, and incidental thereto. Construction of various roads, including but not limited to the entire length of Lawrence Street, the entire length of North Place, and Madison Street, including all work of materials necessary, therefore, and incidental thereto.
Now, going back in regard to the board reconstructing, here's an opportunity. Are you just going to pave them, or are you going to clean and reline the water mains on these streets?
That's a good idea. That's a good idea. Sean, you know what? Let's say it's Tom Harris. What kind of price could you get to reline the water mains?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Or maybe we drop some streetwalk, yeah?
Paying won't take place over the winter.
Well, so we got a plan together. Put a plan together.
And please, before you pave them, and not only the water mains and sewers, because, right, I brought up for years, in front of Mr. Kennedy's house, there's a sewer collapse. And they keep putting asphalt. It collapsed a little more. You got another sewer collapse on Marion Court. They keep collapsing. You got another one that just occurred a couple of weeks ago on Mike Street. We called Mr. Esposito, and they put some asphalt on. So you're doing these streets, but don't pave them until you make it. This way, it's brand-new. I stopped the job in Division Avenue when I got in office. We did all the lines, and over 23 years, you just repaved it, but it lasted quite, we had no breaks over there. So please, before you, it's tableless. I would recommend you table this until you see for Mr. Harris, if you could do, maybe do one or two streets less, but do it correctly and do the entire job.
Make a motion, close public hearing.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders number two for second and final reading. Bond ordinance providing for reconstruction of various roads, ended by the township of Belville, the county investors in Jersey, appropriating $2,811,000. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $2,758,263, bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof.
Make a motion, move for final adoption.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yeah, but Kevin, make sure you talk to Esposito. Oh, actually, don't talk to yourself. Talk to Harris and see what he would do to reline those water mains.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders approved. Order number three for public hearing. Orders to amend ordinance number 3333, creating personnel positions and adopting classification compensation plans.
Make a motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Make a motion, close public hearing.
Second.
Quick move.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders number three for second and final reading. Orders to amend ordinance number 3333, creating personnel positions and adopting classification compensation plans.
Make a motion, move for final adoption.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
I have a few questions. Number one, clerk driver, clerk one, is that, is that his title that we're giving the race to, clerk driver, clerk one? Or is this a new position?
It's just a position.
It's a position, and we're giving him a raise?
No.
No?
No.
Well, it says here, 30,000 to 36. Is that the minimum and maximum?
Yes, that's the minimum and maximum.
Okay. And he's already on hand?
Correct.
Okay.
This position will-
Well, there's just no name, so I really don't know.
But we have you, and you can't-
Okay, so the sanitation inspector, the same thing. Is he working at sanitation inspector?
No.
No? Was it advertised?
No.
No?
No.
Why not?
We have someone working outside of title who needs to, we have someone in this position trying to be a position.
Do they have the qualifications for this job?
Yes, thank you.
Kevin?
Yes.
It's a new position.
It is a new position.
Will it be posted?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it should be posted. Okay, and the third one is municipal treasurer. The only thing that bothers me with this ordinance is that, as I spoke to you last time, Mr. Esposito, I would like them one by one, so I can vote on them. But this forces me to vote either yes, no, or take no part. And I really don't like doing that, because two, I think, should be, and the third one not. But, okay, is it my vote now? I'll take no part.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders approved. Orders number four for public hearing. Orders to amend revised general ordinances of the township of Belville, Chapter 8, case 16, handicap parking spaces.
Make a motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Quick move.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Make a motion, close public hearing.
Second.
Quick move.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders number four for second and final reading. Orders to amend revised general ordinances of the township of Belville, Chapter 8, dash, 8, dash, 16, handicap parking spaces.
Make a motion, move for final adoption.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders approved. Orders number five for public hearing. Orders to amend Chapter 4, General License, Section 1, Licensing Generally, Paragraph 19, License Required, fees of the revised ordinances of the township of Belville.
Make a motion, open it for public participation.
Second.
Quick move.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Make a motion, close public hearing.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders number five for second and final reading. Orders to amend Chapter 4, General License, Section 1, Licensing Generally, Paragraph 19, License Required, fees of revised ordinances of the township of Belville.
Make a motion, move for final adoption.
Second.
Quick move.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Orders approved.
Orders number six for public hearing. Orders to amend revised general ordinances of the township of Belville, Chapter 8, dash, 6, and a four-way stop intersection.
Make a motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Quick move.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Make a motion, close public hearing.
Second.
Quick move.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders number six for second and final reading. Orders to amend revised general ordinances of the township of Belville, Chapter 8, dash, 6, and a four-way stop intersection.
Make a motion, move for final adoption.
Second.
Quick move.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders approved.
Make a motion, open up public participation.
Second.
Quick move.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Latari?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Strumlober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Make a motion, just a minute.
Well, it's fantastic. Now, Prospect Day of Belville. The parade that was on Veterans Day, I have to say, can you tell me what we're going to do with them big trucks, probably army or whoever they are? They are enormous. What are we going to do with them?
Well, I hope we don't have to use them for snow plowing or get people out of the house.
Snow plowing, maybe invaded maybe by another town? They are, they are enormous. They're, I mean, the upkeep on them has to be astronomical to keep them running at all, like Mr. Kennedy had said.
Well, we only have, I, we have two or three, which is good in case of an emergency. Like I said, if we have to go to the flooded valley section, we get people out of the area. This is the type of equipment we need. It was given to us free by the government. We accepted it and delivered. Do the best we can.
You know, Hurricane Sandy, or Irene, we were using the backhoe to put people, and they were getting in the bucket of the backhoe, you know, going up to their doors. And it worked, but that's very unsafe. And you can only do one or two people at a time. At least with these trucks, we could fit, you know, 10 people.
But you can't drive it up to the door if it's flooded up to the top of the truck.
Oh, that would be, yeah. Those things can.
You can drive that in the water?
Yeah.
And then get- Okay, that remains to be seen. And-
We don't see it.
The, the traffic, not the traffic light, the blinking light on Palm Street by school eight, the timer has to be fixed. It's being, it's blinking at night and not during the day. And I think by school tend to, that that light's not working properly. It probably has to be adjusted. Well, Thursday, we were down in Atlantic City, we went to a hearing at the convention center for the tax, the gasoline tax increase. So while we were there, we, after we were done, and we heard what was going on there, which is absolutely ridiculous, we went into the convention center and walked around. And lo and behold, I happened to find that they have the solar power warning things, system. In fact, I want to give it to the stress test, because I got a few of them. It works on solar power. You don't need any electrical components for it or anything, and it stores it for up to, for many hours or days. And maybe that's to wake it up, because these things keep breaking down, and they're not working properly. So, look at you. Thank you.
Mr. Maddenley? Jeff Maddenley. As I'm sure you're all aware now, the planning board has proceeded to move a preliminary approval for the north end redevelopment. And the three plans that were offered by the developer basically left there with little change, as I could see it. And quite frankly, I was amazed. I listened to more than two hours of testimony in the second meeting, and I was wondering who exactly Mr. Madden was working for at the time. I wondered exactly how the board could seriously consider a 50-story building in Belville, even a 20-story building. Under manager Cannon, the master plan approved north of, I believe, Geralman on Washington to the Nutley border in eight-story limit on commercial residential development along the avenue. No one has built anything here that yet. And Mr. Reagan, the developer, comes in with a plan for a 50-story building that would certainly involve the Bikini property, 23.7 acres, that is primed for commercial. It's planned retail-commercial. It affected my building across the street, the zone included. It's not industrial, as it's stated. It's planned retail, and rightfully should be. The zoning on that property is a tremendous appeal and attraction to any developer. 23.7 acres, it's practically clean. No further action letter has been received by the DEP on the soil. Huge. They're doing the underground water treatment now and will continue to. The wells will remain. The property is virtually developable. It's near to. Anyone, any, any degree of recovery, and there will be fights over that property in terms of its purchase value. I mean, you can put more than two large stores, restaurants, theater, anything you want. It's massive. It's massive. And to make it residential would be insanity. Residential comes with all kinds of legacy costs, increases in public workers, police, fire. It would probably require the town to plow collections or give considerations for them. Commercial development is a win-win. All they do is pay. They don't put kids in the school. They don't add traffic generally to prime time when people are going to and from work. They come, they shop, they leave their money, they go home. It's a beautiful thing. A win-win. A lower tax rate, yes, but still, I believe, more than half. And yet, it's all money for the township to offset the currently high taxes and improve water mains and roads and infra- the currently high taxes and improve water mains and roads and infrastructure. It simply, it supplies the town with resources without costing it anything. That property cannot change zoning. It has to remain where it is. If residential were on below the tracks and it flooded out, you'd need a fleet of those trucks to get the people out of there. When commercial was shut down during Sandy with multiple floodings as the tide came in and out and backed up, there was no problem. People fell bad for the businesses, but hey, didn't cost the town a dime. No services required. So please, in my humble opinion, it should have never left that board. It was more than incompetence. You have to wonder what they were thinking. Two hours of testimony, I get five minutes and then cut down, shut off in mid-sentence. That's enough, your time is up. Felt like the Board of Education. So the fact of the matter is, this should be reversed and sent right back to me. The planning board should be giving it back to the developer and saying, "Come back to me with something that's within our master plan, within our existing zoning. And don't reach for federal vehicles, funding vehicles, that would urbanize our suburban town. Let's keep it a suburb." Well, as you know, Mr. Maddenley, it has to come before this council. It does, but wouldn't, aren't they, aren't, mayor, aren't they your advisor? Is this advice?
No, yes, recommendations.
Recommendations. Well, in my, if I were sitting up there, I would send it back to them with my recommendation. Come back in reality. Well, as a council, we'll take that consideration and do what we think is right. We, as you have, we have, we see it this way. I just remember Essex Park and the things that happened with that development. And I know that when these things take flight, even at a preliminary level, they get wings, they get air under their wings. Please consider the reality of our aging infrastructure, our maxed-out schools. We will. Thank you.
Chair, I just liked the best Councilwoman Burke and Councilman Patty. Clearly, that project on Mill Street is not senior housing. The municipal land use law says, or limited to senior housing, people who are at least 62 years and older. So if you want to start catering to your constituency, this is not senior housing. Please, this is not senior housing. It's market rate, age-restricted housing. And now, someone gave, this happened in North Bay. You know, a park here that senior housing? They were promised all this senior housing. When it got there, then the rent was 13, $1,400. So please, stop using the word senior. It is not senior housing. Now, in reference to the follow-up, Mr. Maddenley, I was at that meeting. And, um, at the end, there was some, I've heard three of the members, one of them, who had met my wife and I shopping in the back, 20 minutes was telling us how bad the plan was, and then this person voted for it. The other two had some serious problems with it, didn't understand it, and they voted for it anyway. Uh, then they started giving excuses. Well, it's really not a plan, but on the agenda, it said it. The Northeast Redevelopment Plan, D-L-A-N. And it was such a, they did, the plan is, I don't know if any of you were there. You should have been. The plan is...
Me and the mayor couldn't because we had to vote on, in fact, none of us could be there because we had to vote on what they said in us.
Right, so I was your representative, I'll tell you what took place. The planners were asking questions. The developer, they asked him one specific question, what he had built tonight. And then he went on a 10-minute autobiography, but never saying what he actually built. Not once did he say what he actually built. And by the way, I don't know if it's conflict, but this developer personally called my house three times. Wanted us to go to his office to meet with him. I will not do anything. You want to talk to me and meet me in a public forum. That's the way I do as a citizen and as a public official. I didn't meet in McLeone's Roadhouse and all that. But this is, look at your zoning ordinance. Number one, the intent is to lessen congestion in the streets, to provide adequate light and air, to prevent overcrowding of lands and business, to avoid undue concentration of population. Now, Mr. Esposito can correct me, but my last reference, I think we have approximately 11,800, about 12,000 housing units in Bellville. This guy once put four, and the word, the number 6,000 came into play at their meeting. So I didn't want to put in between four and 6,000 units. That's almost 40% of the present units we had in Bellville, which we can't sustain. We've got problems with the current units we have overcrowded. And that's legitimately what Mr. Esposito has on the books. If you're contracted like me, again, and you know, I think some of you know all the illegal apartments, that figured itself. The other thing, he says, "Oh, this is a 20, 25-year project to build out." We can't complete a project that's proposed for a year. What are we gonna go 20, 25 years? This is so insane. They were asked, I think the chairman of the plan board asked him, he says, you know, I travel, I forget who, one of them says, "I travel in North Bergen." What's the street?
Zandi County.
Zandi County. He said, "There isn't it." The outrageous tower that's blinding everybody in Fort Lee is only 40 stories. He said, "Do you know any 40, 50-story buildings in there?" This is, I always take the notes. I can't read them all, because I got 11 pages of absurd notes that went out at that meeting. This is something that's so out of whack, I agree with Mr. Maddenley. Not only send them back to him, or, or, or the other thing you could do when it comes here, just, I'll give you the matches, or burn it immediately. But this is, it's unbelievable. The density, it's so out of whack with our zoning ordinance. When I say, "All right, it's what you, the council, previous council, put together," right? It doesn't comply with our master plan. And then the other, he's gonna put a train station on there. When we ask not enough parking, "Oh, I'm gonna build 3,000," listen to this, "3,000 subterranean parking spaces under the railroad tracks." I said, "Well, maybe you don't know, this is on the record if you get the train." I says, "You can't control nature. So when the same river floods and overflows Main Street, what are we gonna have? A subterranean car wash." You know, I oppose other things, and, you know, I'm not against things, Mr. Mayor. I'm for things. Some things I am against, like when a previous council unceremoniously dumped the town manager. I was the only one that stood up against that kind of behavior. You'll recall that, I'm sure. I'm for it. The same developer, about five, six years ago, got approval to build 135 housing units and 12 to 14 retail stores in a lot. And ironically, about 30, 35 years ago, late at 20:00, I penned a letter to the planning board, and we agreed. We'd like to see retail on Washington Avenue with two floors of apartments. And we gave our reason. Because at night, there's people around, they'll shop the stores and all. But not 50 stories, 20 stories, even 10 stories. It's not for Bellville. The other thing is, nobody acknowledges, and a lot of you have been in the town a long time, or all your lives. You can't get through Bell, there's only two ways, to go east-west, Jolloman Street or Bellville Avenue. The God Course blocks us all. North and south, we only got Washington Union and Franklin. It's not like other towns where I just was stuck today in my...
I've been on your talk for a while, will you finish up? We know your, we know your point. When it comes to the council, I'm sure, do I think...
Okay, look, please, we're counted because this thing, again, and just one thing, the police officers, a member on the board, I mean, it wasn't even, it felt like 10, 15 minutes into the hearing, he said, "Well, come on, let's vote on it, let's vote on it, let's vote on it." He was in hurry to pass it, without hearing all the discussion. So please, this absolutely ridiculous thing has to be stopped before it gets in its tracks.
Make a motion, move it for...
Yeah, kind of snooze, you lose.
Diane Mopple, 403 Portland Street. I have to say that November 4th, I had the first-time honor of working for the election and getting to talk with quite a few of my neighbors. And Councilman Nattari, I want to thank you for bringing up the fact about the traffic down on Portland Street and the speed bumps. I've been on that, uh, my home for 27 years, November 4th. And, um, I've seen the influx of children come in and going. Um, and we have quite a few children that live on Portland Street that range from kindergarten up to high school. And that's from Jolloman, uh, Jolloman Street down to Little Street. And the traffic during the day, when those children are sometimes out playing, especially on the weekends, it's terrifying. When my 11-year-old daughter was born, my father put up a fence so that my daughter could not go out near the front of the sidewalk. Um, so I really hope that you consider and soon we're able to correct that and possibly put speed bumps. Not the rubber ones, because I've seen going through towns that they're deteriorating and rotting and, you know, and have to be maintained and fixed periodically, that you put the asphalt ones. Also, I don't want to beat a dead dog, but these two gentlemen here, they're absolutely correct and right in regards to the development up on the North End. You're talking about so many rental units coming in. We have homes falling into foreclosure because the people who own these homes currently in Bellville, they can't afford their taxes, they can't afford their mortgage, and they can't afford the repairs, so their homes are going into foreclosure and vacancies. We can't allop multiple-dwelling homeowner. And to sit and rent when my apartment is vacant is very difficult. The one year, I lost $40,000 because it took over a year to get somebody reliable to live in that, in my apartment. So I really hope we consider that you be responsible in the development of the North End down Washington Avenue. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Patricia Wells, AB Street. I have a problem with shopping carts in my district from ShopRite. I have the apartment building on Graylock and Little. All the people come back from ShopRite with shopping carts. So now, instead of being on Graylock, Graylock and Little, they're on Beach and Little, in the middle of Beach Street. There's like three or four of them down Little Street. They're all over. I mean, somebody needs to either write a letter to ShopRite or write a letter to the building manager in that apartment building on Graylock and Beach. It's making it look like a dump.
We'll take care of that. Kev, we have an ordinance on the books. We're going shopping, but let's just go to party, ShopRite, they should go run every day and pick them up, or we're gonna pick them up ourselves and find them.
They do it in nothing. I'll have to find the other ShopRite, they're probably responsive.
Because what happens is, it runs up in front of one person's house, and that person will get to somebody else's house, and it keeps on going up and down the block.
I know you were patient with me.
I saved the best for last. Anthony Stavella, 40 Crescent Terrace. I wanted to bring up the Veterans Day Parade while it was still fresh in some memory here. Since 2011, when my uncle was awarded the Medal of Honor, I had the town did a beautiful job of honoring him. I marched in every parade. Either in a suit tied with the council, or this year, BFW Post 105, named a squadron after my uncle. They asked me to march with them. It's a sad parade. In order to have a parade, you have to have spectators. As you walk that parade route, there's three people on this corner, maybe five over there. I've been asking since the beginning that we need a parade committee. We need people that have ideas and ways to make this parade better, to get the word out, to get the schools involved. It's, it's just sad to walk that parade route and then see no one there support veterans because maybe they don't even know there is a parade. Or maybe we're not getting the schools involved. Now, before, Joe Fornarau, rest in peace, was given a ticket, you run the parade, do the best you can, Joe. Joe's gone. Steiml came in. To the Steiml, you run the parade. The parade was terrible this year. It was worse than any other year. They recycled the wreaths for Memorial Day and put them back out there, faded and missing flowers. Now, I know that this town gives something for this parade. I don't know what the money figure is. I have to know what it is, because I like to know what he spends it on.
$16,000.
$16,000.
$6,000.
$6,000 goes to the DAV? Or that's what it cost us for police?
No, not events. Many of the bands who are marching in the parade are compensated.
Right, well, one's Bellville, one's Nutley, and one's Chevacks.
Yes.
Okay, the, the, the bands are 20 people. I remember bands. Okay, I, we've all been to great parades where there are bands. Now, personally, I think it's an honor for you to march in our parade. Whether I gotta pay you, we can talk about that. Whether we have enough money? This is why we need a committee. We can start a nonprofit. We can raise money in the community with businesses. We can share this parade with Nutley. Nutley doesn't have a Veterans Day Parade. Bloomfield doesn't have a Veterans Day Parade. We can make this bigger and better. We are a Medal of Honor town. That's rare. Check it out, Google it. I don't even think there's another one in Essex County. I don't even think there's another one in Essex County. Five Korean War veterans won the Medal of Honor. And we were lucky that we had one in New Jersey. You know, it's just, believe me, for me, I thought I was going to Washington, getting the medal, and it was all over. This is constant work for me. Make sure the monuments are clean. We had the big break at the high school. What are we gonna do with it? Where are we gonna put it? Is the grass cut? Is the lights on? This is all, it falls on me. I have to make sure that he's honored and respected in the proper way. And it's not easy. I go on websites that attribute this Medal of Honor to Essex, New Mexico. Just to show you, it's all over the world. It's everywhere. And we should embrace it here in Belleville. We should make it our own. With a lot of negative stuff that comes out of Belleville, this is something that's truly good. And I would like the permission from the council to work with Billy Steinle, maybe a council member too, maybe an educator, maybe a business leader, to get together three, four times a year to make this Veterans Day Parade better. Just one thing off top of my head. If we took every fifth grade class, one fifth grade class from every school, okay, and asked them to march in that parade, what a banner, we're number five, we're number one, we're number two. Every one of those kids, mother and father, are gonna come out, because they wanna see little Billy marching the parade, their grandmother, grandfather, their uncles and aunts. This is how we get people to come. It's not happening. I asked Billy Steinle to speak, three or four weeks of parade I've gone. He says to me, your uncle's Memorial Day. Why should you speak? Because I wanted to use two minutes to say a prayer, a poem that I may have found on the internet that may have been bad debt, okay? What happens? Mr. Longo hijacks the Veterans Day Parade, speaks for fifteen minutes in a dress uniform of a United States Marine Corps, that he's not even authorized to wear. I was walking with a Vietnam Marine in that parade, and he asks me, who's that guy in that uniform? Says Councilman Longo. I don't think he's authorized to wear that uniform. And again, there I am, Google. No, Mr. Longo is not authorized to wear that uniform. And to wear that uniform for political gain is a disgrace. I think he should apologize to every veteran in Belleville and every person in Belleville. And if anyone did something wrong, because I checked my facts, I still have connections to the Pentagon, I called the Pentagon, I have an email stating that Mr. Longo is not authorized to wear that uniform. In order to wear a uniform, you have to serve in wartime, or you have to spend twenty years. He retired. Billy Steinle, twenty years Persian Gulf War. Councilman Longo, nineteen eighty-one to eighty-five, there were no wars, he does not have a National Defense Medal. If he did have a National Defense Medal, that would have meant that he served in a time when war, and he's authorized to use that uniform. And I just thought it was disgusting that he did what he did.
Okay, so in regards to Councilman Longo, I, I can't tell you. But what we do, we will get in touch with the new commander of David.
And all I wanna do is, I just wanna make it better, that's all. And no one here who was there that day can say that that's a parade.
And you know, I usually watch in that parade, but I have to apologize that.
Yes, you weren't there this year. I wasn't, I noticed.
I apologized to all of you, the veterans required.
I noticed. But again, I, I, I put an invitation to Congressman Sears, Senator Booker. And then I thought to myself, why are you gonna come to this parade? What do politicians want? They want people to see them. There's nobody to see you here.
And that's been going on for years.
He's not coming.
We tried to get just a memorial service there to try to attract people, but not.
Right, a memorial there is a small service, and I kinda like that. That's why it should be small, and it's always the seniors who come out, because they're the ones who remember. But we're a country who's been at war for fourteen years. Everybody has to know somebody before the war.
Believe me, once.
I really would hope that I get the chance to, to work with a parade to.
We're gonna coordinate with Bill, and.
Please reach out.
If I have, I'll get you on a committee.
I have some great ideas, I really do, and I'm sure there's others that do also. So I thank you for that time.
Thank you.
Lawrence, before I make a motion?
Oh, we have.
George Daniel Polack, St. Anthony Street. Uh, number resolution, uh, number four, part B. Resolution requesting permission from Essex County Department of Parks and Recreation and Cultural Affairs to utilize the remaining funds of the Essex County Recreation and Open Space Trust Fund two thousand fourteen.
Resolution four, four?
Yeah. Um, all right.
So remember to scrub it in.
The park on Cortlandt Street, the work that was done, it looks very, very, very nice. Uh, I commend the council, and that was the grant that Councilman Longo picked up, that, the check, a hundred fifty thousand dollars. It went to that.
Yes.
How much is remaining? And this is in regard to?
Twenty million dollars.
Eighty thousand? We have a projection in terms of what you're gonna utilize.
We want seventeen acres to the remaining parks throughout the township.
You did a great job, thank you.
Lawrence?
Thank you, Kevin. Resolution, excuse, resolution fifteen, appointing a Reed Carroll to the Rent Leveling Board. She resigned from the Rent Leveling Board.
Did she resign? She moved to Delaware. Uh, election day, she came back to Belleville, and she was in the clerk's office, and she asked me if she could go back on it, and I said, the only thing we have left is an alternate, and she asked if she could take it, so I put it on.
We're getting too many people that are appointed to these boards that do not show up. And I think something should be done about that. If you're gonna appoint somebody, you ask them if you can make the meetings or not. If you can't, please do not appoint them. Our last meeting had to be canceled. We had two new members that were appointed at a previous town meeting that I wasn't able to attend. Then they showed up. We had no forum, we couldn't have a meeting. Two new members. Now, again, another one that comes back. We're trying to run a board, and we do a darn good job of it, but we need it, we need to do it with members who are gonna be there at these.
All, all boards should notify the council of who's not showing up, and then we'll remove them. I think after four meetings, you can remove somebody.
Well, we've been trying to get the ordinance for the Rent Leveling Board brought up to date for how long, and we can't get a whole new printout of the ordinance of the Rent Leveling Board to even answer people that come before the board.
Well, I don't know what we can get a copy of, but.
We have a problem there.
And then I'll put it on.
And I have to agree with Jeff and the other people, Vinnie, um, with this, I've been reading up on the development there that they're, you know, proposing for Washington Avenue. If you stand at Graylock Parkway and a couple of other roads, and you look down to New York, you see this huge building, it's somewhere up there on Park Avenue, ninety-six stories high. If that thing doesn't look ridiculous, sticking up in the air there, I don't know what does. And I'd never wanna live ninety-six stories up to begin with. I mean, that's, that is crazy. And the New York Post, just this past week, their center fall, I think it was, um, they had numbered all the buildings, how they're competing, who's gonna have the tallest building in New York. And a good example of a failure, which is what would happen here in Belleville, the Revel Casino in Atlantic City, not that we're gonna have a casino in Belleville, but again, they had these big ideas. Maybe we should have it. Belleville, Belleville wanted the safe, right? Everybody thinks we're the Hudson River, they better take another look down that street that's sitting down there. It's not the Hudson River. But there was the Revel with this big thing that's gonna really, really make Atlantic City wonderful. Nobody wants it. It can't, it couldn't succeed. So again, let's leave Belleville to be Belleville, okay? The town that I knew when they came, that everybody told me was so great, I should've given it second thoughts sometimes, um, before I got too settled in. Um, but apparently, where am I gonna go now? So I guess I'm stuck in Belleville. And as for the senior building, um, I don't know when, Mr. Esposito, I have membership, and I don't know when to tell them we can have a next meeting.
What we're planning to, that was brought up in a pre-session, we're gonna get the developer to have a general meeting for any of the public, and once it come forward, is explain to them the criteria for their applications to get into the building, when he expects it to be done, and so forth.
She wants to know where the parking lot's coming back from. She don't care about the building, she wants to know where the parking lot's coming back.
Well, no, we can't even get into the building. We haven't had a meeting now, it's gonna be a month, and I told my people December the fifth that we would be having a meeting, and I'm not sure whether or not we're gonna be in at that date. Um, and so right now, we have people that are calling me, when are we having a meeting? When are we having a meeting? I said, call the town hall and ask them when we're having a meeting, don't call me, because even I don't know. So when can I expect our people to be in there?
For the clubs, we had an alternate location at the DAV, baby.
It didn't work out, it was terrible. It, it did not have the facilities and everything that we needed. That was, there was really no other place to do it, to move our meetings, and that's why we had no meetings, and we were not gonna haul everything back and forth, even though DPW was willing to help us to do all of this, um, because, uh, you know, you can't, you can't expect senior citizens to be running back and forth for four or five weeks in a row up to the DAV building. I did have my bus ride go out of the Little E Building, which worked out very well.
We would like to give you an exact date, but now the town yard is over there, putting the drainage in so there'll be no more water backing up into the, uh, the senior building. They ran into a problem with the.
I know, I drive around the parking lot every day. I've been down this.
As soon as that gets fixed, it'll be done, and then we'll give you the time for the meeting. Right now, we couldn't say you're gonna be there by December fifth.
Yeah, because I had no idea, and.
And if it's gonna snow and rain, I, I don't know.
Well, that's another thing, we run into the winter time too, where we have to sometimes cancel bus rides and things. In fact, the bus companies themselves must be having a problem, because the man that I use for the bus rides every month, he called me on Friday and wants me to run more bus rides out of Belleville. I guess they're hurting a little bit too, and a lot of people can't fill the bus. I can fill the bus, but now we're gonna start having a problem too, because where are we gonna bring that bus in one day when this other project is finished? What are we gonna do? We have to give it a thought now, and I already made a schedule for the town manager's office for twenty fifteen, and we have to do those things in advance, we can't wait till the last minute.
I hear it's gonna work very well, the Little League.
Yeah, it is. It worked out very well that day.
Well, then you can play your bus rides as part of it.
Well, fine, but again, when the ball season starts, then, then, but, you know, we have to. Well, you know, sometimes we have to think of these things in advance, because it's not that easy anymore down at that senior building. It's getting to be a problem, and I'm not happy with it at all, because we can't organize things anymore the way we want them, because it doesn't work out, we have too much interference down there. And when did it become a public toilet? Whenever we're in there, we got people coming in off the street. I don't deny anybody that has to go to bathroom, believe me, I don't. They can, they could be allowed, but it's getting to be a steady thing, people coming in and out that front door. There's one lady that jocks, that's her piddle stuff all the time. So, you know, what can I say? Lady, if you can't come in, you know, she's running around the block, and it's a big block. So, um, again, uh, we have to, there's certain things need to be controlled down there, and I'm getting a little tired of it, and I'm really a little fed up with it. I'm enjoying my month off from the club right now, and I'm enjoying it a little too much, where I don't wanna really be too involved anymore because of too many problems down there. And I feel now it's time some of the other people took over and did some of the things that I've been doing, and we'll see what happens down there. But I do like to be notified of certain things, so that I can inform the membership, because they all are three-quarters Belleville people, and they need to be accommodated and taken care of. I think that's all I have right now. Okay.
Is there going to be a curb cut?
Name it just like everybody else.
Oh, the L. Del Gercio, Eighth Rope Street in Belleville, I'm sorry. Uh, is there gonna be a curb cut for either the seniors or the senior project on Franklin Avenue?
No, we're gonna let them try and roll with the curb.
The reason I'm asking the question, there is no entrance from there now, but I saw it looked like a tree was cut down.
Uh, there were a few trees cut down on this project, okay? They're currently accessing their property through Franklin Avenue, but when they reconstruct the bridge on Mill Street that accesses their property, they will access their project through Mill Street, not through Franklin Avenue.
So there'll be no entrance or exit from Franklin Avenue?
Not what they have.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion, both public chairmen.
Second.
Somebody wants?
No.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes. Make a motion, move the consent agenda?
Second.
So lead, uh, one?
Number two.
And number two?
Sixteen? One, two, sixteen?
Yes.
Okay.
Say, make a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Schumelberg?
Yes.
Vice Principal?
Uh, resolution one, I'm gonna leave the, the blind parties, um, purchasing orders on for this paid period, but Kevin, you gotta talk to them and tell them to kind of do their own purchase orders. And with the purchase orders here, when you talk to Lamar, ask him where's the purchasing orders for the construction? You know, all the work they're having over there, the, the, the construction people that are doing it for free, or, I mean, we have all the purchasing orders, like I said before, but nothing for any of the construction that's going on. And they talked about being independent, let them do their own bills, nothing against you for it. Make a motion, move it.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally? Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Schumelberg?
Make a motion, move resolution sixteen?
Second. I just wanna make a quick comment. Mr. DiMaggio was vice principal of the middle, well, what was Belleville Junior High when I was there. His wife was a teacher, he was a great guy, great educator, and we just wanted to recognize his service to this community, so that's what this resolution is.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
We'd like to echo Councilman Robel's comments about Mary DiMaggio, because I feel the same way. I did not attend Belleville High, but I knew him, my mother knew him, and he was a great guy. Rest in peace. Yes.
Mayor Schumelberg?
We got anything else to do?
We have three resolutions.
All right.
The first one is for, what was the title?
Yes.
The first one is for, what was the title?
Yes.
Resolution on President Tatcher, Belleville approved purchase order number fourteen dash zero two six eight six, and sign the contract for the nice informed system for the police department.
Make a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Schumelberg?
Yes.
Resolution number two, on your business, resolution appointing a risk management consultant.
Make a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Schumelberg?
Yes.
And this is number three, is resolution automizing free distributed membership in suburban Essex, Essex joint insurance card.
Make a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Mayor Schumelberg?
Yes.
Just wanna note that it was a mistake on this, uh, the next meeting is, uh, December ninth, but it's a Tuesday, not a Monday, last day of the week. But I don't want anybody to miss it. And please, have a nice Thanksgiving, everybody.
Mr. Barack Esposito? I've noticed that on my block on Heckle Street, taxi cabs are lighting up to residential street, and supposedly they're selling insurance from a safety place, a glass place, and the other day we had like twelve taxi cabs from North parked on our block. So I'd like to know, is this legal, you know, can they do this? So if I could check into that, I'd appreciate it.
Uh, I already had conversations with, uh, construction officials, zoning officials, all of the county's chief of police on that incident today.
Yeah.
And I'm told that the business is licensed, and the vehicles are just merely patients of the business, and they have every right to go and pick up their insurance certificates and visit the establishment.
I, I don't understand that, because where do the, the people that pay the taxes park their cars? There's no driveways there, there's, there's no, you know what Heckle Street looks like. Uh, can you look into that further?
I've required a go with the deputy chief.
So that we, we're gonna allow taxi cabs all over the street? It, it doesn't make any sense to me. It's residential, we're paying the taxes. I don't know what can be done, I'm just saying, maybe you could think of something, I don't know.
I'll ask him to take a second look.
Okay. The other thing is, if you could convene a meeting with, um, about street cleaning, with our, our chief or deputy chief or whatever, because a lot of people wanna keep their streets clean, but, uh, I guess the tickets are not being, um, you know, given out, and I have a few ideas on how we can get the street cleaning done, and if not, you know, you have like a, maybe a crossing guard in the front with a ticket book, and they don't move their cars, then they get a ticket. People want the streets cleaned, so it's something I'd like to discuss.
I agree with you, unfortunately, I did have a meeting previously about street cleaning in your neighborhood.
Yeah.
Um, due to the extensive groundwork being done to the vicinity of Clara Moss, and the underground work being done by Public Service Company on Heckle Street, Delmont, Onis, Eugene Place, and Franklin, they relaxed the ticket frame guidelines because there were basically no buses to the residents to park.
I understand that, Kevin, but this is, this is not only this time. This is going on for years. So I'd like to see if you can convene a meeting, if you can do that the street is residential with twelve taxi cabs. Okay, thank you.
Make a motion for the private session?
No, Mayor, would you please not close the business?
Yeah, no, I got two quick things. Kev, I know you wanted to put some check valves down on Main Street to keep the water from coming in. Do you ever, on Main Street, the check valves coming out, you say?
That was through an application that we made.
We never got that.
We have not received a decision on the grant, okay? There was a grant.
That was a grant application.
Yeah.
Can you confirm for me?
No, that's fine.
On the, I'm not gonna call it senior housing. On the housing for seniors, fifty-five, that it is fifty-five and older, and it, and it's not market rate, it's income restricted.
There are income limitations on that part.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that.
Income restricted?
Yeah.
Because I, I met someone that's ahead of it, and they told me it's eight hundred and seventy-five dollars a month. Supply your own heat.
The, the, the income restriction is on, is on, no, the income restriction is on who can, who can actually get in there.
All right, well, I'm telling you, it's going to the head, that's what they told me, so you better get that straight.
You guys are gonna be putting, they're gonna be putting together a committee that's for the things we're talking about.
Not a committee, we're gonna have an open discussion.
An open workshop, we need that, we need that.
Okay, again, I wish everybody, uh, had the Thanksgiving. But I do wanna tell you, at the planning board meeting, there was nobody in attendance last week that they passed to put a gym in where there's five vacant stores are on Main Street. There's a gym going in, so these those stores will be vacant and, or the wheels. It'll be used for something.
They'll have a built-in pool.
On, on Main Street, by his.
I feel that's the way it's gonna come up.
It was a special meeting last week I was there.
Last Thursday?
I don't know, I'm not the secretary.
I was looking all over, I didn't see an advertiser.
It was last Thursday.
Last Thursday, everybody down there, just put the message around.
Not everybody, there was seven members of the planning board here.
Well, we saw the chairman down there, I don't know if he ran back home.
He was back here, he was in a meeting. Okay, we're gonna, I'm sorry. Tom, did you have something you wanna say in the opening?
I'm sorry, we need opener.
You wanna, did you wanna go to private?
Yeah, yes, but there might be some action that, pardon me, I know, but, uh, was this... Mayor, I think something might have gone by in the meeting on the, on the new business. Uh, I was fairly certain there was gonna be discussion on this. What I, what I see is the, uh, is the renewal.
Is it the T R or six percent it's supposed to be?
Well, I'm concerned about the duration of it, and the document that I had, um... I have some concerns about that, if you wanna discuss it in private. I, I, in the copy that I received here, this JIF, the JIF thing is fine. The JIF resolution is fine. However, there is a, uh, there's an IMAC add-on to it, uh, a risk management consultant agreement. And that's not the way that I received it originally, so, uh, you'd like to go into private, talk about it, or?
Well, yes, if there were any changes before I was... So I have to bring the public back in, or we're gonna hold on anything different?
Yeah, you know, if it's necessary to take action, I have some reservations about this. I made notes on it, and, um... The JIF, uh, I guess this is new business number two, they won't be renewing the membership in the JIF. There's an add-on to that. It's not just the agreement to renew in the JIF, it's a consultant agreement.
There was three, there was three resolutions, Tom.
Pardon me?
Three resolutions were read, three separate resolutions.
No, two, two was.
Two resolutions? That wasn't a third?
Two for the insurance.
Two for the insurance, but we read a total of three?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Two separate ones for the insurance. One was, one was the JIF, one was the risk, and then we did that other. So it was, it was separated out, huh?
The other one was, um... Resolution appointing a risk management consultant.
Okay, totally separate from the JIF.
But the agreement was, now, put on the... First of all, was someone gonna come in for IMAC to discuss this?
Yeah, they did.
Right, were these three the ones, the late blooms that we're talking about now? And that's why, Mr. Murphy?
I would, you're gonna need anybody to reconsider the appointment of a risk management on this.
Mr. Murphy?
Sorry, Councilman.
That's all right. That's why I don't like to vote for late blooms because we're not reading the whole thing, and we keep putting them on.
Well, actually, um, this was...
I'm not gonna vote anymore for late blooms.
The risk management was put on, um, the agreement was put under the, the JIF, uh, resolution. Um, I, I really, I'm urging the governing body to, I don't know if I, quite frankly, if I can sign this, Mayor.
They both say IMAC.
Pardon me?
They both say IMAC.
Well, there, one is different from the other.
The one I'm looking for, the one I'm looking at is purely suburbanist appointing insurance.
What's the one I have?
That one I save.
I think he's talking about the contract in the bank that says three years.
Yeah, um, I have some questions about that.
The JIF is three years.
Pardon me? Yeah, the JIF is three years, but I, so is the risk management. Uh, my first question about this is, does IMAC receive a commission on the insurance business and get paid a consultant fee?
No.
You sure?
Pardon me?
Okay. Because I know.
It's all, it's all part of the way the JIF structures it. It's inside the JIF with the payment included, there is no official consultant, no.
And do we know what the number is, what the assessment is?
Yes.
Pardon me? Do you have any ideas?
Actually, we gotta save it with a hundred thousand dollars.
That's good, okay.
Okay, Tom, you good?
Yeah, that's, that's fine, then.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna go to private session now, there'll be no further action taken on any of that.